Good evening, everybody. Please rise and applaud. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Present.
Alderman Logan.
Present.
Alderman Snow.
Present.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Present.
Alderman Schinaman.
Present.
Alderman Kluckler.
Present.
Alderman Folsom.
Present.
Alderman Sabaka.
Present.
Seven present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Audience request, is there anyone here this evening that wishes to address the council? If so, please step to the podium and identify yourself. Hearing none, we'll move on. Community affairs, nobody here for that. Consent agenda, there's two items. Anybody on the council wish to have either one of those removed before reading into the record? Mr. Clark?
Approval of the minutes of the March 20th, 2018 regular council meeting and approval of the bills as presented.
Motion to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Redd.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Snow, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any further questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Under ordinances for first reading this evening, we have one, if you will, sir.
Approval of the ordinance 2018-2372, revised zoning map.
Move for the approval of ordinance 2018-2372.
Second. Motion by Ms. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Snow, for approval of ordinance 2018-2372 for first reading only. Any questions? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, first reading's through. We have one ordinance for second reading and adoption, if you would, sir.
Adoption of ordinance 2018-2363, authorizing execution of a contract for solid waste collection services.
Move for the adoption of ordinance 2018-2363.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Logan, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, for the adoption, second reading and adoption, excuse me, of ordinance 2018-2363. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Thank you. City minister, Ms. Biker.
All right, I'd like to start off by thanking the Finance Committee, the department heads, and all the other people who attended the Finance Committee meetings last week that helped us finalize the FY '19 budget. So I appreciate all that help and getting it ready to present to the full council. I believe if I had to sum up this year's budget, the most significant things is the consideration, is considering the difference between the reoccurring revenues and expenditures and the non-reoccurring revenues and expenditures in both enterprise funds and the general fund. You all have your presentation in front of you, and we will start on page four, talking about the general fund revenues and assumptions. The general fund assumption for the reoccurring revenue sources with slight growth in some revenue sources, slight decline in other sources, and stagnation in others. FY '19 budget predicts an increase in all general fund revenues, including non-reoccurring revenues, by 26.16 percent over FY '18, and general fund reoccurring revenues at 8.65 percent of FY '18. The non-reoccurring revenues include the assumption of 1.2 million in U.S. EPA and Illinois EPA grants and revolving loan funds, respectively. Certain revenue assumptions are made based on historical data and formulas as supplied by the Illinois Municipal League for calculating motor fuel tax, state use tax, and state income tax, or LGDF. The 2 percent administrative fee for the non-home rule tax is assumed showing a decrease of over $26,000 to that revenue stream. Another decrease in revenue is expected in the state income tax, or the LGDF. The FY '18 assumption was $101 per capita, which was considerably higher than the FY ' '19 assumption at $95.80 per capita, which could result in a $48,000 loss of revenue. One significant increase in revenue is the $100,000 Rule Fire Protection District increase over past years due to an increased property tax assessment to rural residents. The tax levy for our Rock Falls residents for the upcoming fiscal year held at a 4.99 percent increase over the past year and will result in approximately $8.38 increase to the average homeowner in Rock Falls. Contributions to the general fund by the utilities are 10 percent of the total revenues, which is down from FY '18's contribution level of 13 percent. Below is the chart representing the past seven years of the general fund revenues. A breakdown of those contributions from the utilities to the general fund are on page, or on page, excuse me, a breakdown of the contributions are on page six. That is all the money that is given by the utilities, I'll put it up on the screen. Those are all the funds that the utilities contribute to the general fund. All right, we'll go to page seven. Page seven is significant, but it shows 67 percent of all the general fund revenues come from four sources only. Those being the first and the highest is the sales tax, the second at 17 percent is property taxes. Income tax and utilities are both at 10 percent of the revenue to the entire general fund. All right, now we'll go on to page eight, which are general fund expenditures and assumptions. The FY '19 general fund assumes increased expenditures over FY '18 by 25.44 percent. However, without the 1.2 million in non-reoccurring expenditures for the limestone and parish Alford brownfield sites, the increase would be 7.96 percent over FY '18. The most notable increase, other than non-reoccurring brownfield expenditures in public property, is in the street department budget for repaving of South 14th Avenue Buell Road and rebuilding a portion of South 13th Avenue. These two projects total over $600,000. The overall increase in spending at 25.44 percent does not exceed the increase in anticipated revenues of 26.16 percent. As in the past, the three largest general fund budgets are police, street, and fire, followed closely this year by public property. The next page shows the pie chart breakdown of those expenditures. First is the police department at 32 percent of the general fund expenditures, followed by the street department at 23, fire department at 15, and public property this year at 14 percent. If you totaled just those four expenditures, or those four departments, that's 84 percent of the entire general fund, being expenditures are just in those four areas. All right, we will move on to the utility or enterprise funds. We'll start with the electric utility. I'll start in the second paragraph. The electric department budget includes a large capital project this year for the $9 million rebuild of Avenue A substation. The funding for this capital project will come from the issuance of alternate revenue source bonds. The revenue and expenditure assumptions for the utility are inclusive of both the bond funds and the cost of the rebuild. There are no other significant changes to the operation and maintenance or capital budgets of the electric utility. The hydroelectric generation facility located at the upper dam operated at record levels and generated over 1 million kilowatt hours multiple months during the past fiscal year. Wastewater, the FY '19 wastewater department budget reflects a rate increase of 8.93 percent for basic residential wastewater customers. This increase is the result of a rate study completed in FY '18 and reflects a one-time adjustment to the rates with the next three fiscal years increasing at a much lower rate of 3.9 percent. The wastewater department operations and maintenance budget has no significant changes to revenues or expenditures. However, the capital budget does include a project totaling $600,000. The project involves sliplining a 24-inch sanitary sewer line on West First Street, Leroy Avenue, and Eighth Avenue. Sliplining the existing lines is a considerable cost saving over replacing the lines in their For the water department, the FY '19 water department budget reflects a rate increase of 4.5 percent each year for the next four years for basic residential water customers. This increase is the result of a rate study also completed in FY '18. The water department operations and maintenance budget has no substantial changes to revenues or expenditures, and the water department continues to expend capital funds on the distribution center and water treatment plant facility. The increase in sewer and water rates combined will result in the basic residential customer having an increase to their bill of $5.13 per month. Garbage, fiscal year '18 marked the final year of a multi-year contract with mooring disposal for solid waste pickup within the city. The city has successfully negotiated a new seven-year contract, which will begin August 1st, 2018. The contract will bring about a new era to the city, where two 95-gallon toters will be provided to each of the residences, one for garbage and one for recyclables. Curbside garbage collection will continue on a weekly basis, however, the recyclables will be picked up every other week. This contract will allow the city to continue to provide curbside pickup to the residents with no increase in rates scheduled until FY '21. There are no significant changes to the garbage fund budgets, other than that. All right, our newest utility, the broadband and fiber. The newest of the city's utilities, FiberNet, is rolling out in FY '19. Rock Falls FiberNet is a fiber-to-the-premise project whereby Rock Falls businesses and residents will have access to one gigabit fiber internet service. The first construction phase consists of building out the backbone and business districts, which began in FY '18 and is scheduled for completion in September of 2018. Rock Falls FiberNet is going to deploy the gigabit fiber to the home, to the premise project using the Fiberhood model. The service area is divided into 24 Fiberhoods, however, I believe it's now 26 Fiberhoods, with approximately 250 homes within each Fiberhood. When 45 percent of the residences within a Fiberhood have pre-subscribed for FiberNet service, the city will complete the build-out. FiberNet will be available to residents within the city and anyone who is currently, is a Rock Falls electric customer outside of the city limits. Their FY '19 budget for FiberNet reflects the first year of operation with approximately 234,000 in operating revenue and 940,000 in operations and maintenance expenses. Once the system is built out in its entirety, the expected annual operations and maintenance expenses are targeted at 1.3 million, with annual revenues of 2.6 million. The FY '19 FiberNet budget includes a capital, capital project representing the build-out of the backbone and three Fiberhoods. The FY '19 capital budget is expected to be the highest year of capital expenditures if the broadband financial plan is to be followed at 3.7 million. On page 12, this, the highlights of page 12 include that both water and wastewater have lowered their reoccurring expenditures in an effort toward reducing their annual O&amp;M costs. Other indicators demonstrate that the effects of the new solid waste contract will decrease our revenue in that department and have an increase in expenditures. This will lessen somewhat when, in FY '21, when we anticipate the next rate increase to the residents. All right. Page 13 is the historical revenues for water and sewer, and electric and broadband will be included once it is up and running for at least one year. We'll then show that as historical revenues. So we go on to the FY '19 total government fund summary. The next four pages are the breakdowns of the general fund, enterprise, and other standalone funds. All of these budgets were reviewed by the Finance Committee last week, and we'll go to page 18 for the total budget summary. The total budget sum of $41.79 million represents a 15 million, or 36.32 percent increase over the FY '18's budget. The electric and broadband fiber departments have large non-reoccurring capital expenditures, which have significantly skewed comparison over the past fiscal years. In addition to the electric and broadband fiber projects, several other city projects added to the variance. The following capital projects account for the $15 million variance. So the 9.1 in the Avenue A substation rebuild, 3.7 for the broadband, 600,000 for wastewater sliplining project, 1.2 million in EPA projects for the PA and limestone building sites, and $500,000 for the South 14th Avenue and Buell Road repaving a portion of South 13th Avenue to be rebuilt. So the FY '19 budget, total operating budget expenditures for the city are $41,791,223.13, and assumes a surplus of $6,104.19. The surplus assumption is based on total operating revenues projected at $41,797,327.32. The FY '19 budget continues Rock Falls' strong budgetary performance by maintaining reserve fund balances and excellent cash liquidity. I have the chart there that represents the reserve balances that are going to be required in each one of the general fund and the utilities. I guess the best way to compare this year's budget would just be to make a really simple analogy. It's the same as if a homeowner realized that he needs to have a new roof, new furnace, new AC, new water heater, new plumbing, and new vehicle. The homeowner has access to the funds to do it, he just didn't realize he was going to do it all in one year. So I fully expect to see next year our budget numbers come back down probably by about $14 million, and get close to that $26,000, $27 million, and away from the $40 million. So, and again, thank you to the Finance Committee, the department heads, and everyone else that showed up for those meetings. So now, Your Honor, I guess I would like to ask for approval of first reading of the FY '19 budget.
I move for the approval of the first reading of the FY '19 budget.
I'll second it.
Motion by Ms. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, approval of first reading only of the FY '19 budget.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Your Honor, the third thing I have tonight is the approval of the contract with Terricon Consultants, which is in the Alderman's packets.
I'll move for the approval of the contract with Terricon Consultants.
Motion been made by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, rather than this is not to exceed $20,000?
Yes.
And I'd like to ask to make sure that could be added into Terricon, we know in the second as well, thank you very much. So we have a motion on the floor to be seconded, approve the contract with Terricon Consultants for a dollar amount not to exceed $20,000. Questions?
If I could take a minute to explain the contract, because I'm sure everybody has questions about it. What this is, is the EPA assessment team came in and they did some drilling and, last fall, I think everybody remembers that. And what was found from that is going to require some more investigation to finish the comprehensive site investigation report. What they're going to have to do is they have to go much deeper than what we've gone in the past. If you look at the scope of work, it actually does explain exactly what they're doing. They're going to be sampling, going down at least 20 feet, and then they're going to be sampling coming up. They're also going to be putting wells in. This has to be done, this report and the TACO, which is the Tiered Approach to Corrective Action, has to be done in order for us to be enrolled in the SRP Plan, which is the Site Remediation Program. If we do all those things, then the $800,000 in the revolving loan funds coming our way will be already enrolled in the program, the site investigation report will be done, and then the work plan will be done for how this is going to be, how we're going to handle that site. And that's going to be a pretty big work plan. But in order for us to get to that point, we have to go through all this testing. This is kind of the money that we're having to put up front to get to the place where we can consider taking that $800,000 in revolving loans. It did, the first reports, you know, that's why we're having to come back, the state team that comes in and does that for free, they don't do this advanced of drilling or sampling, so. And as you can see, the biggest part of the cost with Terricon was the actual finishing the comprehensive site investigation report, which we have to get to both the Illinois and U.S. EPA's. Now, questions? There is, it did make it a little bit more complicated because we had that space on the northeast corner of that property that was not under, that was not under this project back in 2011, or, excuse me, 2010, when this was first addressed. That property was, had equipment of Maiselle's sitting on it, and it wasn't remediated, it wasn't looked at, there's no NFR letter on it. And that's the part that we're looking at, the probability of the highest contamination. So it did make this process a lot more complicated than what it should have had to have been, so.
The motion has been made, and Kuhlmeier seconded by Ms. Sabaka, approve the contract with Terricon not to exceed $20,000. Move for the questions and discussion. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Excuse me.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
All right, next on, under my portion is approval of the Engineering Services Agreement for Construction Observation for Buell Road, 13th Avenue, and West Fifth, possibly West Fifth Street with Willett Hoffman &amp; Associates, 212 Third Avenue, Sterling, Illinois, in the amount of $49,700.
Make a motion for the acceptance of the Engineering Services Agreement for Willett Hoffman and the amount of 49,700. For the questions. Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Just as a note on that, Your Honor, in that contract, if we would happen not to do West Fifth, or we would end up adding additional on there, it'll be at that same price scale, and we can amend that later. So if we don't end up doing West Second, because I know the public property hasn't approved it yet, but that dollar amount would come off for there, so. All right, next we have approval of the Engineering Services Agreement for West 21st Street. That is the curb engineering for that two-block portion with Willett Hoffman &amp; Associates, 212 Third Avenue, Sterling, Illinois, in the amount of $17,800.
Make a motion for the approval of Engineering Services, for Willett Hoffman, in the amount of $17,800 for 21st Street. Second. Motion by Ms. Reitzel, seconded by Mr. Snow, for Engineering Services Agreement for West 21st Street with Willett Hoffman in the amount of $17,800. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
All right, next is the approval of Resolution 2018-784, authorizing the execution of the contract addendum with mooring disposal, which extends our contract by one month to July 31st, 2018.
Make a motion for the approval of Resolution 2018-784, authorizing the execution of the addendum with mooring disposal.
I'll second it.
Motion by Mr. Reitzel, seconded by Ms. Sabaka, approve of Resolution 2018-784 for the addendum with mooring disposal. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye.
Finally, I just wanted to give the council a bit of good news. We've closed out the ASLID grant and received our final payment of $200,000 from the state.
And what is or was that money used for?
The $400,000 was ASLID funds that we used for the Riverfront Park. That's all.
Good.
Two items. First, I'm looking for approval of the renewal for health insurance coverage at a 4.8 percent increase, and dental insurance coverage at 6.3 percent increase through the IPBC.
I move for the approval of the renewal for the health insurance coverage with the increases as stated.
Chair, any second? Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Reitzel, for the approval of renewal of health insurance at a 4.8 percent, and dental at 6.3 percent through the IPBC. Questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
Alderman Snow.
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier.
Yes.
Alderman Schinaman.
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler.
Yes.
Alderman Sabaka.
Yes.
Seven aye. I'm also looking for approval of the MICA renewal for liability and workers' comp coverage at an increase of 13.78 percent for $550,554.
I move for the approval of Municipal Insurance Cooperative Agency renewal in the amount of $550,554.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kuhlmeier, seconded by Mr. Snow, for the approval of the MICA renewal for liability and workers' comp, $550,554. Questions? I would just note that in this regard, over the next couple of years, we will probably not be as high, but we won't see a very much of a variance because of our history, because it's based on so many years in the road. We lost a good year, but we're in a series of bad years right now, so we'll look for increases again next year, not of this magnitude, but if we weren't in this co-op, it would be a heck of a lot more than we're looking at, so, just for that. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel.
Yes.
Alderman Logan.
Yes.
We lost a good year, but we're in a series of bad years right now, so we'll look for increases again next year, not of this magnitude, but if we weren't in this co-op, it would be a heck of a lot more than we're looking at, so, just for that. Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
Yes.
Seven aye. That's all I have tonight, Your Honor.
Mr. Reese, that was a little bit of a, guys, thanks for what you did to bring up. The trick is here. Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Nothing to answer.
Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to answer.
Chief Nelson's on the road. I have your command court, and you think from your department? Thank you. Chief Cook?
Nothing to answer.
Mr. Siri?
Nothing to answer.
Mr. Peddell?
Nothing to answer.
Mr. Stinkett?
Nothing to answer.
Diane?
No.
Juna?
All right, new guy. Who's not really the new guy really anymore.
Not anymore, I don't qualify. Broadband Tonight seeks approval of the acquisition of IPv4 space. This, these are internet numbers that uniquely identify our customers using Agent Capcom Networks LLC, 2700 Anderson Lane, Austin, Texas, not to exceed $40,000. This provides for 2,048 IP numbers.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Mr. Schuneman, excuse me, second by Mr. Logan, the acquisition of the IPv4 using Agent Capcom Networks not to exceed $40,000. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
Tonight, Broadband also seeks approval for the second internet uplink proposal from Cendio Network, Field Box 833, St. Charles, Illinois, at the rate of monthly recurring cost, $6,860, with a non-recurring charge of $8,200. I believe this is the best option for our second internet uplink considering cost for liability and diversity.
Before we take a motion on this, I would also add that you should have had on your guests a resolution from the city attorney that is recommendable that goes with this particular motion. So if you'd be so kind to make or you make a motion to approve this internet uplink, please reference Resolution 2018-785. Your motion, please.
So moved. Make it easy on me.
Mr. Schuneman?
Second.
Mr. Logan? Thank you. Motion by Mr. Schuneman, second by Mr. Logan, for the approval of the second internet uplink proposal from Cendio at a rate of RMC at $6,860 and NRC of $8,200 as well as the Resolution 2018-785. Questions? Yes, fair. The reason, sorry, the reason for the resolution of this is because the service that's coming to light here actually, you know, the service order of the previous master service agreement that you had before, Cendio, I felt would be a resolution that identified the terms of conditions of this service. Okay, any others? Roll call.
Alderman Reitzel?
Yes.
Alderman Logan?
Yes.
Alderman Snow?
Yes.
Alderman Kuhlmeier?
Yes.
Alderman Schuneman?
Aye.
Alderman Kluckler?
Yes.
Alderman Sabatka?
Yes.
Seven aye.
This whole night, sir, thank you. Thank you very much. Word reports, Mr. Reitzel?
Thursday morning, 2:00 a.m., 5:00 p.m. That's all. Thank you. Mr. Logan?
There's the afternoon, 5:30, the ordinance licensing personnel.
Mr. Fulmer?
Yes, I have a little statement here. This forward-looking budget was complex and required cooperation from employees, department heads, Aldermen, the mayor, and coordinator, coordination for a hard work, all done by our city attorney, city administrator. Sorry, I left out the city attorney.
He's taking credit for stuff I've done before, so don't worry about it.
We couldn't have got there without the city attorney as well, so. Robin Blackert, and thanks to all participants, because a forty, forty-some million dollar budget is vague, and realizing that we still have a second meeting to pass it, I think that it's a very complete budget and well-represented, I think.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Snow?
Just like to thank the electrical department and the linesmen that were involved in restoring power to our uptown area and getting businesses back on to where they could do business as usual. They, for what had happened, things got done rather quickly, and I appreciate that.
Mr. Schuneman?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. Mr. Parker?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. And Mr. Folsom's not with us? Ms. Sabatka?
I'd like to acknowledge all the hard work that animal control and Happy Tales do in order to keep all the animals off the street, the dogs and things like that. We try to rehome them, and they don't put them down. You know, the animal control has kind of the bad record, they used to have to do that. They don't do that anymore, except on very rare occasions, and they try to rehome the dogs, which is really important. This time of year, there's a lot of people dumping their animals for some reason.
Nice, real quick, Robin spoke to one of them, the ASLID grant, and the other thing I just wanted to make mention of, that our hearts go out to firefighter Matt Hoffman with the city of Sterling, Illinois, whose wife of 30 years old died suddenly and unexpectedly, and the funeral was at 10 o'clock, when our best wishes and prayers go out to Matt and his kids, I believe they're 3, 9, 11, or somewhere, or a little bit close to that. So, I talked to first, talked to Matt and his family. And Matt's mother is Melissa Thoma, or what used to be the mayor of here, a few years ago. Just wanted to mention that. Nothing else on the agenda this evening? Chair would entertain a motion to the jury.
I say we adjourn.
Okay. Ms. Sabatka, Mr. Reitzel, all those who favor, say aye.
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 Thank you.